Welcome to your city commission meeting. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on channel two at 6:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. Call to order, pledge of allegiance, followed by silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at first is old business, consideration of previous meeting minutes, minutes from June 14, 2022, regular meeting. Any questions or concerns for my fellow commissioners? Commissioner Martin, any concerns?
No ma'am.
Okay, just need a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes from June 14, 2022, regular meeting.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed. Second consideration ordinance, second consideration ordinance number 8188 regarding speed limits along Forest Street between Eisenhower and Metropolitan.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, there have been no changes since the first consideration of the item and it's before you tonight for final approval.
Okay, any questions or concerns from anyone?
There's confusion out there already. Somebody told me that we gotta be nuts to be up in the speed limit between Eisenhower and down there by St. John's, up to 55 miles an hour.
No.
I correctly read that, yeah.
No.
But there's, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, all the signs, well, we'll put it out, all the signs will have flags on them for about 30 days, so there'll be extra attention called to them, the ones that changed. We'll start the transition July 1st, working with KDOT to get the signs updated. I believe there's 28 signs and we'll flag them for 30 days.
And when, when will they be put up?
Starting next week.
Okay. Okay, so it's a roll call vote, so starting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
Commissioner Hengula?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
And me, aye. Okay, passed. Okay, new business, public comment, i.e. items not listed on the agenda or receipt of petitions. Public comment is limited to two to three minutes and no action will be taken by the commission on public comment items. Please state your name and address. A sign up sheet will be provided in the commission chambers for anyone wishing to speak. So Sarah, do we have anyone this evening here?
We do, Janet Klazinski.
Okay, Mrs. Janet Klazinski, she's the Luminary County Clerk. Thank you, Janet, for being here.
Thank you for inviting me. When I visited with Kamala a little bit, we decided it would be a good idea if I came in and talked a few minutes about the upcoming August 2 election. So as you know, we have a primary on August 2 and everyone will have the ability to vote. There's a ballot throughout the county. It will have federal races, state races, and local races. We also have a question on this time. It's a constitutional amendment, which I believe that question will generate probably one of the highest turnouts that we have seen for a midterm primary election. You know, most of the time we might see 25 or 30%, but I think that we could see actually up to 50, 50%. So, which is great, you know, that's, in the county clerk's office, that's what we strive for, is, you know, we stay very nonpartisan as far as any candidate or issue, but we just want the folks to get out and vote. Advance voting will begin on July 13 at the courthouse from 8 to 5 and it will run till noon on August 1. We have, today I actually processed about, I think I ran labels already for 900 folks that have already requested advanced ballots be mailed to them, which then signifies to me that we are going to have a heavier turnout. It's so easy for folks to register to vote because voter registration is open until July 12 at 5 o'clock. There are links right on leavenworthcounty.gov under the election office, giving you the ability to register to vote. It also, there are links that take you straight to an advanced ballot application, which makes it, makes it very easy for folks if they don't want to get out and go to the polling place, that a ballot can be mailed directly to their home. If they're gonna be out of town, a ballot can be mailed directly to whatever address they would like to have it mailed to. So we have made the state, and I think all of the county clerk's offices across the state, made it easy for people to register, made it, has made it easy for folks to advance vote. Our drop boxes are still up. This year there was talk in the legislature to kind of limit some of that, but all of our drop boxes are available, our ballot drop boxes, which are used heavily, which I think are very secure. There are cameras on them and I think the security is of the utmost, which of course, that's something else we strive for is just integrity in Leavenworth County elections. Is there any questions that any of the council may have, the commissioners?
Just discuss the boundaries again, a little bit.
Thank you, Nancy, that's an excellent point. This year, Leaven, and this year the state of Kansas went through the redistricting and Leavenworth County had a lot of changes. And so we went in and made those changes and mailed out little voter registration cards to all the voters throughout the entire county, which then gave them the opportunity to review the different representatives that they have. It gave them the opportunity to review where they go to vote, to look at their address to make sure that's correct. It also on the back talked about how to apply for an advanced ballot and so everyone did have that opportunity, which I think was really very helpful for all the voters throughout Leavenworth County. The county, I think some people will be very surprised, Leavenworth City picked up another state representative, the 38th district came up into Leavenworth City. And so Leavenworth City is now represented by the 40th state representative, the 41st state representative, and the 38th state representative. So that was a big change for all of our voters within the city. Any other questions? Yes.
I understand there will be three ballots, right? One for Republican, one for Democrat, and one with only the question of the amendment.
That's right.
So you don't have to be a Democrat or Republican to go vote.
Absolutely. We have actually, it's pretty even, just as many Republicans, Democrats, and unaffiliated across the board. People, if they are, voters if they are unaffiliated, when they go to the polling place or come up to advance vote, they are able to declare if they want to. They can declare either party or they can remain unaffiliated and receive the question only, which, that has been years and years since that has occurred across the state to have this type of a question during a primary election. To change your party, which is probably a phone call that we get a lot at the office, if someone has received their voter registration card and saw that they were Republican and they want to change to Democrat, or Democrat and want to change to Republican, all party changes between those two parties must have occurred by June 10th because there is a deadline to change your party. Even though voter registration does not close until the 12th of July, to change your party was the 10th of June, okay? And sometimes it's hard for folks to understand, but even when a person comes in and say they are Republican and they get that Republican ballot, if they want to vote just the question only on that ballot, they can certainly do, do that and only that portion of the ballot will count because you can vote for one race, you can vote for all the races, but the question or race that you do vote is what is counted. And so we have had to explain that quite a bit.
Commissioner Martin, did you have any questions?
No ma'am, Mayor.
Anybody else?
Of course, we're always available and I really appreciate this opportunity to come in and speak to you guys. We have a very open door policy at our office and just appreciate people getting out and voting. So thank you. Thank you again Kamala for inviting me.
Oh yeah, thank you Janet so much.
Appreciate everything you do to educate us on this.
Thank you.
Okay, did we have any other public comment? Anybody? Okay, we will move on. Two general items, update for unsafe structure 717 Spruce Street.
It's going to be Hal Burdette, our chief building inspector, to handle this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. As we said, it's an update for 717 Spruce. The structure was damaged by fire in November of 21. City has funds from the insurance company that we're holding. We had a public hearing in March. We gave them 90 days to start repairs. Many of the, many of the repairs have been completed. The electrical work has been done on the inside, the walls have been repaired inside. I would note, as my policy report states, that we do not have a heat source or a furnace in this house yet and there's still a window broken on the back. I would recommend that we hold on to these funds for another 90 days or shorter if they get that, get that, those repairs made and then we will bring it back to the commission.
Okay, any, any questions, concerns?
No, I'm okay with that.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I don't know if there's any, I don't see the owner here, so.
Okay, so we're looking at possible 90 days?
Yes, and like I said, if they get the furnace in sooner and get that window fixed, we'll bring it back to you quicker than that.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Martin, did you have any questions?
No ma'am.
Okay, then I just need a motion.
I move that we give the owners of 717 Spruce Street another 90 days to complete repairs to include installing a furnace, that is not to exceed 90 days.
Second.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Request for partial reimbursement for speculative building incentive loan.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, I'm gonna start on this item and then turn this over to Mr. Dan Gutshahl, who is the Leavenworth County Port Authority Spec Building Loan Committee Chairperson. Just a quick overview of this project, starting amid 2021, the LCDC, Port Authority, Leavenworth County, and the City of Leavenworth started working with 21st Century Management LLC on a project to bring the headquarters of MAPS Inc. to the Gary Carlson Business Park. It's part of those efforts, the entities above explored the first use of the LCPA speculative building loan program and Dan is here tonight to talk about that project. And then at the end, there will be a request authorizing the reimbursement of the city's portion of the loan provided to the 21st Century Management LLC in the amount of $49,239.65 back to the Port Authority and I will now turn it over to Mr. Gutshahl. Dan?
Thank you Paul, appreciate that. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your time tonight.
Welcome.
I'm basically here tonight to request funding to partially refund the Port Authority for a $200,000 capital investment that they made in an industrial building located in the Gary Carlson Industrial Park here in Leavenworth City. Since some of you were not here back in 2018, indulge me a little bit and give you a little background so you're all on the same footing together on the understanding. Back in January of 18, the Port Authority formed a committee of five with the powers to research and report the idea of plans to create options for small businesses to invest in buildings anywhere in Leavenworth County. We had a very difficult time getting five members for that particular committee, so myself, Josh Hoppus, and Harlan Russell served on that particular committee and we had a representative from each community as ex-official members on the committee and anybody that has worked with me on committees knows, anybody in attendance committees is required to work, doesn't matter what your title is. So we went to work on that and came up with a committee goal to expand the industrial base and improve employment opportunities for Leavenworth County residents by increasing new industrial construction. We primarily do this by lowering the hurdle for capital investments, or if you will, down payment for small businesses to establish new industrial construction. Very big hurdle for small businesses to come up with. I told the story in the original briefings, that when a customer comes to me and says, "Dan, I want to get a loan to build a building at the industrial park and it's gonna cost me a million dollars." I say, "Okay, well I need 20% down, I need $200,000." And small businesses just don't have that kind of cash laying around. It's very unusual if they do and it prevents them in building buildings. So this program was designed to help lower that hurdle for any small business that's starting businesses in Leavenworth County. The program was put together and was approved by LCDC in November of 2018 and the Port Authority also in November of 18. Fast forward two and a half years, we waited. We got our first, well, we got our second application on June 26, 21. The request was vetted by a separately appointed LCDC committee. Approvals from the LCDC executive committee was obtained and also from the Port Authority. Email communications were sent to Paul and Mark Law for his county of Leavenworth and on August 31, 2021, Leavenworth County Economic Development Corporation, LCDC, entered into a promissory note with the borrower 21st Century Management LLC for $200,000 and it provided the needed capital to construct their building on the north portion of Lot 9, Gary Carlson Industrial Park, commonly known as 5001 South 13th Street. The loan amount was determined by predetermined formula and it's in your packet, it's on page four of the memo in your packet that was determined, we'll get to that. Moving on to page two, this was the information that we had to work with when we were going through this particular process. This was a 10,800 square foot building, built again on Lot 9, Gary Carlson. It cost one, almost one and a half million dollars to build and appraised for $1,390,000. The particular business that is occupying the building has 21 employees and has an annual payroll over a million dollars. They started construction in August of 21, figured it was gonna take a year. They have office space in this building, about 4,600 square feet and another 6,100 square feet in warehouse space. You can read some of the other information, some of the incentives that the city of Leavenworth put out originally when we were negotiating with this client out of Lenexa to move their operations out of Johnson County into Leavenworth County was the 60% real estate tax abatement for five years. They issued industrial revenue bonds, which means they could buy their construction materials tax-free and the city of Leavenworth had a small business grant of $5,000 that they provided and then LCDC, the building incentive plan, was also implemented. So those were the resources that were used to attract this particular business to relocate into Leavenworth. 21st Century Management is owned by Darryl Yoder and Richard Reed. They rent the building to a related business interest called MAPS, which is a progressive independent technology company featuring comprehensive suite of leading imaging and printing products, services, software and solutions. The LCDC spec building loan is a 0% interest rate loan. Payments are deferred on the loan until such time that what we call the lead bank's loan is paid in full. Once that is done, then they start making payments in the same amount that they did to the lead loan back to LCDC to pay the loan proceeds back to LCDC. In this particular case, our repayment date will not start until September of 2032. So we have, till then, we're just gonna sit quietly and monitor. The borrower has an $870,000 construction loan that they got through InTrust Bank and it's scheduled to mature on August 5 of '32. The very next month, we'll start getting our payments for the same amount that they're paying them. Takes about 24 months for them to pay the loan back in this particular situation. There are other triggering events that occur during that tenure period that would cause the borrower to have to pay us back if they paid off their loan earlier at InTrust Bank, an example of a triggering event, or if they refinance that loan, that's a triggering event. They don't have hazard insurance, they don't pay their taxes, there's several other triggering events that, that are put in there. LCDC does have a mortgage, second mortgage, assignment of rents, UCC filing, and we are insured on this particular loan. The $200,000 funding from LCDC originally came from the liquidity resources of the Port Authority in August of 21 in the form of a donation to promote economic development. It was understood in the initial program briefings in 2018 that a request for partial funding of the original $200,000 paid by the Port Authority would be made when the building is completed and occupied. I would like to tell you that the Port Authority has an unlimited supply of money, just like you guys do and we don't, we have very little and we don't have a lot of income-producing capabilities to do that. So these are the levels that we have to participate to attract and support these small businesses and if we have very much activity on this, it would quickly wipe out the proceeds of the Port Authority. So we do what we do best in Leavenworth County, we cooperate together, join forces together and we share the load and responsibility and the work. In this particular case, there's three entities that are primarily impacted, obviously the city of Leavenworth, the county of Leavenworth, and the Port Authority. So we've asked those three entities to contribute to the $200,000 to make it work. Page four is the formulas that were used to determine the number. We do cap it. They originally qualified it up to 287, but we capped it at 200,000 simply because we have to control the resources that we have. Down the bottom of page four is how the money was broken down by entity in the consideration. As mentioned before, our goal is to expand the industrial tax base and improve employment opportunities in Leavenworth County residents by increasing new industrial construction. And this is achieved by providing a capital loan that has a balanced funding between public and private sources that will help offset capital investment needed by the participant for construction of a new industrial spec building. This is a loan that has to be paid. The loan is a 0% interest rate, deferred payments helps with the cash flow of the small business as well. The building in this particular case is 10,800 square feet, which is right in the wheelhouse of the size of small businesses that we were targeting this for. I can tell you that our bigger businesses, the ones that do 50,000 and up buildings, won't be interested in this program, but for the small business, they need the resources. So officially, I'm requesting tonight from the city of Leavenworth, $49,239.65. County is gonna contribute 57, 184.43 and the Port Authority will be funding the rest of it at 93, 575.92. So far, the response has been very good. Moving on to page six, nothing happens in LCDC, the Port Authority, without a lot of good talented people coming to work, rolling up their sleeves, volunteering their time and expertise and then we have great people like, like Paul here and Penny that contribute significantly to the success of the operations from day to day and it's really nice to have them onboard. You can see the list there of people, you are included in that particular list as you consider this funding option at this particular time. As an elected official, one of the things you get asked from time to time, you know, is, is it worth the money to, are we gonna get a return? So if you look on page seven, your category's in the blue there at the top and what we did is we took all the taxes that this building has been paid, subtracted all the incentives that were provided and came up with a projection of the earnings back to the city of Leavenworth. In 10 years, the current value of that money today would be worth $39,665. So even though you've paid all these incentives and gave the tax abatements and give the grants and all that, you're still gonna benefit in the tenure period of almost $40,000. In over 40 years, which is close to the life of the building, it's $252,000. In the scheme of things, those are not the biggest numbers in the world, but this is for small business. You know, and the more of these we do, the better the city grows. 21 jobs, you know, some of those people are gonna move to Leavenworth, they're gonna grow. So this is how we grow and how you benefit as a community for industrial development. If you wondered where I got those numbers from, if you turn to page, page eight, there's the calculations and the assumptions that had to be used to draw those particular conclusions and I won't go through those. Page nine is key contact individuals, from the Port Authority attorneys to the lender, the lead bank, the borrower, the insurance agent, and the property location. Some of you may or may not be familiar with Gary Carlson, so page 10 is, is a map that shows where this building is located. And then pages 11 and 12 is the progression of the building, pictures of the progression of the building as it was being constructed, starting on the upper left-hand side of page 11 was the first one. As you can see on page 12, at the very bottom is the final picture and it's encouraging to see that the graphics that we got originally kind of matched the final product. It's a very nice building, very attractive, very well put together, nice large warehouse in the back, they've almost got it full, we're probably gonna have to figure out a way to give them another loan sometime to make a bigger building, I hope, not really. So with that, entertain, any questions, anybody has?
Just a couple of quick comments while you're gathering your questions. Source of the funds, if you're wondering where the 40... The city's portion comes from, the recommendation from staff is the city's Economic Development Fund. As a reminder, the city sets aside 15% of our portion of the countywide sales tax. So there's a countywide sales tax, the cities all receive a portion of that. The city sets aside 15% and dedicates that to economic development efforts, so there are sufficient funds within that fund to reimburse the Port Authority for this project.
Any questions, the local commissioners?
Looking forward to seeing the building.
Yeah, me too.
I think it's...
...reminded a number of times.
And their certificate of occupancy was issued this week.
Oh.
And so they, they were on schedule and so they're ready to roll. Ish. As, as much as you can be with, with buildings and stuff, there's some delays, but we're doing, we're looking good.
Commissioner Martin, did you have any questions?
No ma'am.
I just need a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I move approval. Let's go back to the beginning here. Let's see, approval here. I move that we authorize reimbursement payment of the city's portion of the loan provided to Twenty-first Century Management LLC in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents to the LCPA.
I thank you.
Begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Yay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
And he thanked everybody else, but this would not have happened without Dan Gutsholl. He's the driving force behind this project, MAPS coming here, all that kind of stuff. So Dan's work was instrumental in this whole entire process, and I thank him for the work he did on behalf of the city and the county.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Okay, next up, bids, contracts, and agreements. Consider purchase and installation of Stubby Park restroom facility.
Yeah, we have Steve Grant, the Parks and Recreation Director, and Brian Bailey, our park superintendent, to present this item tonight.
Thank you, Paul. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. It's great to be here with you tonight. This item is to consider installation of a restroom facility at Stubby Park. And in twenty-twenty, you recall, we replaced the playground equipment at Stubby Park. When we did that, we were able to expand the footprint of the play area, more than doubling it in size. Now we now have two composite structures, one for the five-to-twelve-year-old kids, one for the younger, five-and-under, and then many individual play features, swing sets, rockers, spinners, whatever, for making it much bigger, new walkways and everything. Brian, if you could put the master plan up. As we did, this was the general master plan when we talked about what expansion we wanted to do at Stubby. Now this changed just slightly in the configuration of the playground equipment as we built it, where we put the walkways, what made sense. But what I wanted to show you here is the general thought process that went into when we created a plan to expand the playground. We wanted to plan ahead for this very scenario, which we're excited to have how popular Stubby Park, the play area and play features became. So what this just shows you is the general layout of where the restroom facility will go, and it is the, as you walk on the walkway, it's that building there on the right-hand side as you walk towards the playground equipment from the parking lot. The structure you see on the other side is the shelter that we hope to do later this year. So like I said, that's just the, I wanted to show you the general layout. That has changed a little bit, the overall footprint, but the overall layout is still intact. Stubby Park has always been serviced by a porta potty, going back for as long as it's been there. As we, as the popularity grew and we opened the new playground equipment, anybody who's driven by there just sees how flooded it is with kids and exactly, exactly what our goal was, to make it a destination type of play area for kids and families. So we increased the service of the porta potty there from one week, from once a week to twice a week. And then it became very evident that that wasn't near enough. So as we talked in our goal-setting sessions last year and throughout the CIP process, the discussion of having a restroom, a permanent restroom facility at the site made a lot of sense. So we, Brian and I, with the help of administrative team, went to work on talking about different purchasing options, whether put it out to bid, or the cooperative purchasing avenues. And as we searched through those, the city is a member of the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract. We have a contract with them. And on that contract also, we found BKM, who was the general contractor in the first phase of all this, also has a contract with Sourcewell. So we sat down with them and started talking about the possibilities of a restroom facility and them being involved at the park. As we continued on, we got into this cooperative purchasing contract with them and Sourcewell, and we talked about the restroom facility itself. We initially wanted to go with a complete prefab fabricated restroom facility, but it became apparent real quick, became very cost prohibitive at that site. So we talked about going ahead and having a split face block building constructed on-site. The picture you see here, this is actually the elevations from when we did the Hawthorne restroom. And this restroom is modeled almost identically with the same footprint, the same split face block that is at the Hawthorne restroom. That's exactly what we were looking for. The restroom will have a men's and women's side. Each one will have two facilities with a urinal and a handicap accessible stall on the men's, and then two stalls, one being accessible on the women's side. So with that, we got into discussions with BKM, and they, so there's the floor plan of it, and basically, you just, it's just like the Hawthorne restroom, if anybody's been there with the entrance on each side, drinking fountains on the front, and the nice wide big pipe chase in the back to access all the plumbing. So to go into the cooperative purchasing a little bit, Brian and myself had many, many meetings with BKM Construction themselves, along with the representative from Sourcewell. Mr. John Greider works for a company called Gordian. They administer the Sourcewell projects on the cooperative purchasing to make sure everything's going, meeting the competitive bid process. And Mr. Greider is here this evening if there's more questions regarding the cooperative purchasing. It was a very, very productive way to do it, and I wouldn't say it was any quicker maybe than, because we had several meetings, a few meetings on-site, and then several meetings with the construction company at their site, going back and forth about everything that we wanted and needed in this restroom facility. So we're really, really excited with the end product that we got to. We're excited to have BKM constructing that for us. The first phase of the construction over there at Stubby Park went fantastic. They were great to work with, great to work with in the field. And so we're really, really excited to get going on this project. With that, after going through the cooperative purchasing project, the whole process, the final price for the restroom facility and its entirety completion is a hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. The funding source for this, you'll recall, we issued temporary notes to fund all of the parks' projects through this year, which is, started with the splash pad, and then this restroom facility, and then also the Havens restroom facility and parking, and then finally the shelter, which we will do towards the end of the year, assuming funds remain available for that. So with that, we recommend the proposal from BKM Construction LLC on the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the construction of this restroom facility at Stubby Park in an amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. And I'd like to open it up for questions you all might have at this time.
Yeah, Mr. Grant, what is the projected completion of it?
So they've indicated to, they plan on getting started sometime late July. They'll be able to start doing groundwork on-site. They'll order the block as soon as we negotiate a contract and get a purchase order in place. Construction's starting in late July. We expect probably take a couple of months, so probably sometime in late September or early October would be, you know, everything's obviously dependent on weather.
Right.
Delays.
And materials.
And materials, right. Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Will the parks still be open?
It will. Yeah, the porta potty will remain on-site. They'll always hopefully have access to the parking lot and the trails or the pathways getting to the playground. Yes.
Other than the new shelter, everything else is now in place, including all the trees?
The only tree that you might see on there that is no longer there is in that detention basin, which would be that one right there. The Public Works Department put that stormwater detention basin in there. All the other trees are still in place. The mirror image of the parking lot there, we are not going to be doing that. There's new parking lots going in up at the top of the hill on Third Street. We did extend the parking lot when we did the first phase by, what, four or five spaces, I believe. Yeah. So then since there's additional public parking going up at the top of the hill, we're not going to take away, because that would cost us another tree or two, I think, if we went over that direction. So we're not going to have to do that part.
Okay. And it says here, new fence. Is that fence already installed?
Correct. There's a fence that runs right here along Fourth Street.
Yep. Good.
One of the things we got from a lot of parents as we were developing that was the worry of their kids making a beeline for Fourth Street.
Especially sledding.
We made it, it's only a four-foot high, and it's black fence, so it doesn't really stick out, but it serves its purpose.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good. Seeing as how you brought it up, the additional parking lots that the concrete company is supposed to be installing, do you know when they'll be doing that, or if they've done it already?
It looked like they were doing groundwork up there last time I drove by. I haven't seen any asphalt, I don't know if it's going to be asphalt or concrete, well, it's going to be concrete, so it's Geiger.
Yeah, and what they're going to be parking on it.
Yeah, I've seen they've done some groundwork, but I haven't seen any pavement yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Martin, did you have a question?
Uh, no ma'am. Mr. Grant, I appreciate everything you've been doing on this, because there's been a lot of progress. And I know my family and I, we've really enjoyed being out there too, so thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Just one more thing.
Sure.
I'm glad to see that we're using a company that's based here in Leavenworth. BKM, that's great that we're using a company right here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grant.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the proposal from BKM Construction LLC in the amount not to exceed a hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-five cents for the construction of the restroom facility at Stubby Park.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bowden.
Aye.
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 Save the next one for you, Nancy.
Okay. Okay, passed. Okay. Next up, consider purchase and installation of Havens Park restroom facility and parking area.
Mr. Grant and Mr. Bailey will continue with this item.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, this is, this August nineteenth will be my twentieth anniversary here with the city, I'm proud to say, and there's been a cry for a restroom at Havens Park for all twenty years. We're very excited about this project. The usage of the park has grown, and as the usage of the park has grown, so has the need for a restroom. And in two thousand and ten, we hired a firm to do a master plan of the park, and I believe we've shared that with you all. It's very extensive, and yeah, we reached very high on that. You know, you want to do that and see what you can do, and hopefully get done in the future. But the first thing identified, anytime you're starting, to get any more patrons into a park, is some sort of restroom facility. And over the past several years, we've had volunteer groups building mountain biking and hiking trails, and we've started putting asphalt trails in there now, and then, of course, we're adding to those again this year. So we're very excited. We developed a master plan as we were talking about this. If you could pull that up, Brian. As we were laying out where it would go in the park, and this is kind of the exact same concept we did over at Stubby Park. Where do we put this, where it makes sense, in the case we're able to, you know, expand, whether it be with playground equipment or shelters or things like that in the future. So to orient you here, the road at the top there is Ottawa Street, and on the right is Twenty-Second. And then that drive right up the middle, that's the entrance into the main park, and the plan is to put head-in parking right off of that. Now, that's why the price tag on this is a little higher, because we're moving a lot of dirt, have to find a way to get access to it. So that'll all be concrete head-in parking, along with ADA walkways leading up to the restroom facility. The restroom facility itself is going to be a prefab, completely concrete facility. Brian, if you could pull up the CXT. It's a CXT Cortez model. You see these at a lot of parks. The entire restroom facility is made out of concrete. We have two of these in our park system now. One is at the soccer complex and the other one down at Haymarket Square. That's why we went with this type of facility. They're extremely durable. This particular model has two unisex units on each side, obviously with drinking fountains in the middle. It is, they're extremely durable. We will be going with stainless steel fixtures out at this site, just to a little bit of a remote site. But along with the site plan and the development out there, we are putting in a lot of area lighting, security lighting. We will be putting cameras afterwards on both this restroom and the restroom at Stubby. Those will be coming in after the fact on both of them. It wasn't an upgrade model on this concrete facility, but we plan to do that. You see, there's a light over the drinking fountain there, and there's also a light on the back. And then, like I said, we met with Evergy on-site, actually this afternoon, to talk about other area security lighting out there. We, as we did with the Stubby project, we staff decided to go with the cooperative purchasing on this as well, through the Sourcewell contract. On that Sourcewell contract, this local general contractor, Cos Construction, is on there. We've utilized Cos Construction before, very, very successful projects. What I have the most experience with is they did the renovation of the sports field back in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. Always been great to work with. Again, the monies for this project will come from those temporary notes, it could be accommodated from those temporary notes that were issued. The parking there, it's going to require quite a bit of dirt work. We'll be putting a tube underneath it, you know, a pretty good ditch along there. Our staff has already moved a couple of the legacy trees that were right there. There's quite a few legacy trees. This park's obviously adopted by Lions Club, and a lot of Lions and legacy trees. There was only one that would have been affected, and we've already, we moved that back in the spring when it was a good, in anticipation of potentially being able to do this. So after working, just like we did the other project, working with Cos Construction, several meetings on-site, working with meetings at their offices down here, and with Mr. Greider from Gordian, we feel like we've gotten to a place where we got a fantastic product coming in for the citizens. It's been a long time coming, and we couldn't be more excited. The total construction costs, including all of the parking, all of the grading, all the concrete work in the restroom, hook up and put in place, is three hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifteen cents. With that, the staff recommends a proposal from Julius Cos Construction Company Incorporated on the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the construction of this restroom facility and parking area at Havens Park in an amount to not exceed that three hundred and thirty-seven seventy-six fifteen. So with that, I'd love to entertain any questions you have.
No, I just like the fact where it's located compared to where the old restroom used to be, and then, you know, future growth you put on here with a shelter and possible playground. So now it looks great. Looks great. Any questions? Or, like, do you have a question? Okay. Let me see. Commissioner Martin, did you have any questions?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay, go ahead. All right. I'm so happy to say this, after all these years.
Did you have a question?
Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, not a question, just a comment.
Okay.
You're two for two.
Two for two.
Two for two. Two for two.
They're from Leavenworth also.
Right, right. We're very excited.
Okay. Okay. I move that recommendation of the proposal from Julius Cos Construction Company on the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the construction of the restroom facility and parking area at Havens Park in the amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifteen cents.
Second.
Okay, begin voting with Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure to announce it in the Lions Club.
Yeah, I know. Okay, next up is consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the claims for June eleventh, 2022 through June twenty-fourth, 2022, in the amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventeen cents. Net amount for payroll number twelve effective June seventeenth, 2022, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars, forty-nine cents, includes police and fire pension in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents.
Second.
Begin voting with Commissioner Bauer.
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion passed. Okay, our regular meeting is over, so I'll go around. Does Mr. Kramer have anything?
Just a few quick things. As a reminder, the city offices will be closed on July fourth in observance of the Independence Holiday. July fifth, a week from tonight, at the study session will be the presentation of the city manager's proposed 2023 operating in 2023 to 2027 capital improvements project budgets, followed by day-long budget hearings on July fifteenth, Friday, July fifteenth, here in the City Commission Chambers. And then just too quick, as we close out, we have one more week of baseball and softball at a sports field. I believe staff's done a good job, but I'd like to thank the fourteen and fifteen-year-old umpires, cashiers, workers for all the work they've done this year, for what they've put up with. It's been a hot year, we've had rain, and then also our lifeguards at a woman who continue to do a really good job, who are out there in all the elements. We wouldn't have a pool. There's a lot of communities right now that have either pools closed, reduced hours, reduced amenities at their pools, because they don't have enough lifeguards. There's a regional and national shortage, and the pool manager out there and the pool management staff has done a great job. Our staff's done a great job, so I'd like to thank them for the work they've put in thus far.
Okay. Commissioner Martin, did you have anything?
Uh, no, ma'am. Everybody have a great week.
You too. You too, Mr. Hinkin.
Same thing. Everybody have a great week. Be productive and enjoy.
God bless and happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July, and if you haven't seen Havens Park, some of the old timers like myself remember when we used to have picnics in that park. That was where everybody went. And over the years, it kind of went downhill, and now the city and the trail mob is doing a great job of working on the trails up there, and it is really a beautiful park to see. So if you haven't seen it, take a drive over there and go on up into it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Now, also, have a safe and happy Fourth of July. That's all I have. Just need a motion.
So move.
Second. Begin voting, Commissioner Martin.
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned.